Twenty-one Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. Number one, call to order, we just did that, establishing a level quorum. Seven of seven, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the invocation and pledge of allegiance at this time, please stand. Uh, Mr. Chambers, could you do the, uh, invocation for us?
In God we come, and in our thankful and grateful hearts, thank you for your many blessings. As we come here in the Father, we thank you for our cannon, we thank you for the citizens there, cannon. As we come to do business in this meeting, we pray in your name. Things be done according to their will, and their will only, that's the board on a special way. Trust me at night, in your precious name we do pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get the approval of the agenda, please.
No move.
Second.
Seven of seven, take the vote, please. Unanimous. Approval of the minutes, please.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion and a second. That's unanimous also, approval of, approval of the claims, please.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
That's unanimous also, approval of the fourth quarter appropriations.
No move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion and a, uh, second. That's unanimous, thank you. Uh, are there any announcements? Uh, any public comments, Ms. Lynn?
Yes, sir. We have Donna McRae Jones, District Three.
Good evening.
I love her.
Thank you for mine, too.
Jennifer Hav, the Board of Supervisors, Ink Pen. I stand before you today for Habitat Humanity Buckingham Bill. And most of you may know March is the month for women, representing women. So I invite you to go on Facebook, since we have a covert, we cannot actually have hands-on building. But what we're featuring is women in construction. So we're featuring a different person each day of the week. And also let you know that last year, we did, we built, completed one home. And we have a new partnership family for this year. Building will be a little different, but still let you know that we're still working. And want to thank everybody for their support, uh, for Habitat Humanity Buckingham Bill. But do go on Facebook every day this week and see women featured in construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Donnie Shoemaker, District Four.
Good night. I just want to thank Mr. Miles for the work he's doing and he's staying in touch with the members of his district. Yes, I just want to toot his horn a little bit. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Gary Stasco, District One.
Hey, everybody. Sad, pitiful, disgusting, lazy, ugly, ignorant, shameful, embarrassing, awful, repugnant, gross, careless, vulgar, litter, Buckingham. This is a huge public problem, the, problem that impacts us all. I, as an individual, cannot remedy it, and the board cannot ask me to pick up other people's trash up and down the highways, highways. This is not an occasional piece of trash lying out at the back of a truck. Hallers are losing bags and citizens are tossing it out their vehicles. Enforcement is needed. A revenue stream dedicated to the problem is needed. A highway department contract is needed. Now that the economy is picking up and will only get worse, revenues will, revenues will increase as trash is a function of economic activity. Decal, decal enforcement is an issue. Please do something. When fall comes, the undergrowth fails to hide the trash. The snow packs and exposes trash, and everyone can clearly see driving on our public entry corridors. It will be like this until spring hides it, and the highway department either shreds it in mowing or contracts to, contracts to pick it up. Next year, fall will come, and for five months in the winter, our mental health will be degraded by this appalling problem. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't catch your name, what was, what was your name?
Uh, Gary Stasco.
We got something for you right here. Uh, we just developed a new anti-litter task force. Mr. Miles is gonna hand you a little brochure of what some of the things that we're trying to get done here in the county.
Well, this is a huge public good, public product, it's, it's.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
We have one voicemail from Kenda Honeman.
Hi, this is Kenda Honeman, District Five. I'm calling for the Board of Supervisors meeting comment on March the eighth. Um, I would like to say that your planning commissioners, who you all nominate, obviously we're not, uh, electing them, had quite a meeting February twenty-second. Uh, a great deal of, um, conversation about limiting public comment. And I think I've heard a lot of concern in the community about our democracy and which direction this is heading. Um, obviously Chairman Bo, uh, would favor not so much comment. Um, he seems to think that people repeat themselves. I'm not so sure he's listening, so I'm not sure how he knows that, but possibly he is, and I just don't realize it. But, uh, we're not seeing response to, uh, comments that we bring up. And we bring in, besides, uh, local people, we bring in experts to speak. So there's, uh, a lot of education that can take place there. Um, yeah, nobody showed up to speak to them, uh, because we're all pretty disappointed and discouraged that our voices don't matter. It would be, uh, real helpful to see a, a change in that. Um, I will say that the, um, HB twenty-two thirteen that Elizabeth Guzman sponsored has passed through both the House and the Senate. It's going to Governor Northam's desk to be, uh, approved. Um, and this isn't just a local matter, as Senator Peak seems to think, he was quoted as saying that. Um, it's along, uh, the entire gold pyrite belt, which runs from Fairfax to Halifax. So this is a, a Commonwealth, um, many different representatives and districts being involved. Um, we are having a, another webinar. Um, the Virginia League of Conservation Voters is putting together this webinar for us March eighteenth on the issue of gold mining. And, um, you can go to the Friends of Buckingham webpage to find out information, or, um, you can let me know. This is Kenda Honeman. Um, I'm happy to, uh, have you join us for that. Maybe, uh, a little more education might be helpful. Thank you.
And that is all.
Next item is, uh, VDOT Road Matters.
Good evening, Board, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, how are you guys doing tonight?
Going well, thanks.
Going well.
Okay, uh, well, I put together a little update. It's slightly different than normal months. Uh, I'll start off by saying we're all excited there's only twelve more days until spring. Uh, I say that because we were just heavily impacted in the Farmville residency with, uh, ice storms and snowstorms. So, uh, we've been working diligently to recover from that. Uh, the, the hardest-hit storm occurred on February the thirteenth. Uh, and I think we probably still have about six more weeks of cleanup ahead of us. Uh, so far, uh, the four counties that I manage, we've stockpiled twenty-five-hundred cubic yards of debris at thirteen different locations. Uh, we've had to kind of shift gears and move some people around, uh, to the harder-hit areas. We've also rented equipment and brought on six contractors just because of how widespread and severe the damages. Um, so it's been, uh, not business, well, it's been, uh, like, it's like emergency-style repair work that we're doing. So it's just tree limbs and, you know, just that type of woody debris all along the sides of our roads. Our hardest-hit counties were Charlotte and Prince Edward, but Buckingham and Cumberland also got some damage. Um, so if you see a tree limb on the side of the road, don't worry, we will get it. We're just, uh, working our way that direction. Um, so I guess the three, three non-routine repairs that we were able to make between all those snow events, uh, right in the town of Dilwyn, um, where Hancock Road and Camden Road, uh, intersect, there was a little bit of a drainage issue occurring on, I think it was on Camden Road, the, the shoulders. The dirt shoulders had gotten a little bit high, and that just kind of happens over time, but it's causing the water to drain and go down, uh, one of the citizens in that area's driveway. So, uh, we got those shoulders clipped down and fit, and, you know, restabilized them, and now the water is draining properly again. So, uh, I felt like that was a very positive thing to do right there. Um, we took care of a drainage issue that was occurring at sixty-nine thirty-nine Bell Road. The board has brought, brought me that, that location to my attention. Um, so we were able to do a little bit of ditching there, and we've checked that pipe. Uh, it looks like water should flow through it again, so we're, uh, that was another good thing that we were able to partner and get done as a, as a team there. Um, and then we had some, due to all the plowing we had to do, pushing snow, uh, on Route six-twenty-two, we had some material end up in the ditches and a couple of the driveways that tie in a little bit above the road, the plow actually kind of took a little bit of material off where the driveway ties onto the road. So we, uh, patched that up, uh, just to try to get the, the smooth transition off the roadway back onto that driveway for the people that live at the, on the couple. It happened to two or three locations out there, but we were able to touch them all up. So I wanted to at least let everybody know that that has happened. Um, but I guess at this point, uh, I'll just say that we're working as hard as we can to also do routine maintenance. Uh, we're, this time of year, traditionally, especially this year with how wet it is, the unpaved roads, uh, gravel roads, we're gonna be machining those, uh, as much as we can, keeping them, you know, smooth and passable. Uh, and then just potholes, we're still seeing potholes showing up every day just due to how wet the, the subgrade of the roads are. Uh, we're still getting some cold nights, so we're still getting those potholes, but we're taking care of those. Um, but we're definitely getting that debris that's out there. So if you got, got constituents telling you about tree limbs, uh, we're, we're working our way that direction. So I want to open it up and see if the board has anything that they do want to bring to my attention at this time.
Hey, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks again for, uh, that tree over hanging the road, you guys took care of that. Probably within an hour of me emailing you, so thank you very much, that avoided it falling on someone's car.
Oh, yeah, we're happy to get it down, so thanks for letting us know.
Mr. Chairman, one quick issue, uh, this is, uh, Jordan. Scott, uh, thank y'all for filling in that huge hole on the bridge road, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, no problem, thank you, sir.
Uh, Scott, I got a question to you. Uh, I know there's a lot of, um, potholes still remaining. Uh, are you going road by road, or you, or do you want the residents of some of these roads to call you and let you know that they're in pretty bad shape?
Uh, we're, we're trying to just be systematic about it, we're keeping our graders going. Um, if you have somebody that's bringing an issue to you, certainly, you can either let us know or have them call in and let us know, uh, we could try to, you know, make sure we haven't missed it or something. But they're, pretty much all of our roads are just, as soon as we get done, we're basically starting back over and making another loop through the, you know, the two-area headquarters regions. Um, we're, we're not maybe running as many graders as we do, so there, there's a little bit more lag time in between the cycle. Uh, but you can certainly let us know. I think last month you brought a, a few of the roads to my attention, and I hope they've been graded. I was, you know, I, I let the area headquarters know which ones that you guys told me about last month.
If anybody's got any other issues they need to address with Scott? All right, Scott, thank you so much, we appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Board, no problem, my, my pleasure.
I'm gonna move right on to, uh, public hearings, and the first one is gonna be the VDOT abandonment of route, uh, nine zero six-six for the full length of the state-maintained portion formerly served as the Gold Hill Elementary Schools. And we're gonna open that public hearing right now. Any discussion from the board?
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that the abandonment, um, as advertised, be agreed to. For nine oh six-six.
Close the hearing first. Before you do that, since there are no comments and no discussion, we're gonna close the public hearing for, uh, Route nine zero six-six.
Yes, sir, I would, I would move that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I think we have a motion and a second to, uh, abandon Route nine zero six-six formerly of, uh, the Gold Hill Elementary School. Unanimous to, uh, do that. Uh, item number two is gonna be VDOT, uh, abandonment of routes nine eight, nine five, eight five for the full length of the state-maintained portion of that formerly served as the bus loop for the Dilwyn Primary School. We're gonna open that public hearing at this time. Discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On our board packet on the computer, it has nine five seven five, and our paperwork shows nine five eight five.
And it would be whatever's in their letter. Okay, be my type of agenda.
That's from Mr. Edwards, so do we want to go with nine five seven five is the real number?
To be right, yes, sir.
Okay. Want to make a notation of that in the minutes? All right. We're gonna close the public hearing at this time for, uh, Route nine five seven five. Can we get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we abandon that, that route.
Have a motion?
I can do it.
I can do it.
Okay, we have a second of, of motion and a second. Uh, call for the vote, please. Unanimous to abandon Route nine five seven five, uh, Dilwyn Primary Loop, Bus Loop. Okay. Item number three is, uh, we're gonna open the public hearing for the Electoral Board to consider the amendment to the Buckingham County redistricting ordinance to move the District Six polling location from Taylor Masonic Lodge to Sharon Baptist Church.
No one signed up to speak?
Is there any discussion from the board?
I just want to say that voting for safety reasons, two precincts, so he's on the way there.
Yes, sir, I think that was a great idea. I've been through there on days that it was election day, and it is a tremendous amount of traffic right in that curve. So I think this was a really good call, and we do appreciate Sharon Baptist Church, uh, helping us out with this, too. No other discussion, we'll close the public hearing for, uh, the Electoral Board. Any motion?
I made a motion.
Have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
Second from Mr. Bryant to, uh, amend the redistricting ordinance to move, uh, the District Six polling location from Taylor Masonic Lodge to Sharon Baptist Church. Can we take the vote? Mr. Chambers.
I hit it, you all do that.
You got a hammer?
Let's call Jamie.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Chambers. All right, we're going to item number four, which is case twenty-dash-ZMA two-eight-one. Uh, Dez Raj requests to rezone from Agriculture One to Business One for the purpose of business expansion, Tax Map ninety-five parcel thirty-two. Ms. Edmiston, is that for you?
Um, this property is located at thirty-four oh seven South Constitution Route, um, Dilwyn at the intersection of State Route six forty-nine and State Route twenty. This property currently operates as Route twenty market, which is a grandfathered use. Mr. Raj wants to expand his business and construct a thousand-square-foot facility that will house a convenience store and food specialty grill and shop. When an existing grandfathered use will be expanded or enlarging, per the zoning ordinance, the usage must be brought into compliance. Mr. Raj would not be able to apply for an S U P N A one because his new facility will be larger than the specifications on page eleven of the ordinance, which states convenience, general store, maximum two thousand square feet and no more than four petroleum pumps. This location is approximately nine miles south of the Centenary Scott School. Both corridors outlined in the comprehensive plan. Mr. Raj has included his VDOT determination and understands that further VDOT review may be needed along with the site plan for construction, all subject to final decision. Um, Mr. Raj is here with us tonight to address any questions or concerns.
Anybody have a discussion with, uh, Mr. Raj? Questions? Want to step to the microphone?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just want to say thank you for, uh, putting that facility there where it is, and, uh, we need all the business we can get in Buckingham County, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everybody, for supporting me for this, a new building coming up. So it gonna maybe take a couple of years, we will get it done.
Awesome. Yes, sir.
He can put a fence around, he got, he been there for years, he had no problem.
You mean on the backside, Supervisor Chambers?
There's no problem with trash blowing back there now?
I mean, that, that shouldn't be a problem now, too, if they, I don't see any problem, people throwing trash there. But he requests to put the fence back there, so I just agree on it because I have no choice, he's my neighbor.
That's, that's very nice of you to, to try to be compliant with what he'd ask, and, uh, that's showing a really good attitude as a, as a good neighbor. Uh, and I appreciate that, and I know, uh, having run a business like yours for years, that, uh, you know, you try to do the best you can, but sometimes things do happen that's out of your control, so anyway, uh.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion, are we? Approve this.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We gotta close it, yeah, we're gonna close it. Is anything, anybody else got any other discussion?
Yeah.
No, okay, we're gonna close, uh, the case number twenty Z M A two-eight-one. Bryant, you ready for your motion now?
I made a motion, yes.
Okay. Miles, you second it? Okay, can we take the vote then, to approve? All right, it's unanimous approval for Mr. Raj. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, uh, number I is zoning matters and public hearings, Ms. Edmiston. All right, now we are going to end with your presentations, budget presentations. Uh, number one, Michelle Laxion. Did the best I can, I'm from the country.
It's okay, that's my executive director, I'm Sidney Johnson, I'm filling in for her this evening.
Okay.
Uh, I hope everybody's had a good day so far, and as I said, I'm Sidney Johnson. I'm the new forensic advocacy program director for a South Side Center for Violence Prevention, also known as Madeline's House. First, I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued support. Without it, we would not be successful, especially with COVID-nineteen going on right now. Secondly, I'd like to share with you our efforts in twenty-twenty. We continue to provide, uh, free and confidential services to include counseling and crisis intervention, advocacy and accompaniment, education, resources and referrals, and shelter to victims of domestic violence and sexual violence, and sexual assault and sex trafficking. We continue to provide these services to victims who reside in Buckingham County. I have a couple of statistics I'm gonna share with y'all. In twenty-twenty, we served ten, uh, individuals from Buckingham County. That included a total of two hundred and three bid stays. As you already remember, last year, we expanded our therapy program by having all of our clinical staff trained, specifically in play therapy. We also expanded our food donation program to community clients and established ourselves as a facility sheltering animals and families together. This year, our efforts to continue our strategic plan quickly halted and shifted with COVID-nineteen. While many, many businesses closed or shifted to online services, we have victims living at our shelter, so we were unable to take that route, and we're forced to find ways to improve our facility and practices that allowed us to continue serving victims while also trying to keep it safe for our clients and for our staff. For example, example, we usually have twenty-four bids available, but with the pandemic, we were no longer allowed to have individuals share rooms who were not family, so that limited us to seven rooms. We were able to keep our doors open for most of the pandemic, though we had to initially limit the number of clients In two thousand and twenty, we served ten individuals from Buckingham County. That included a total of two hundred and three bid stays. As you may remember, last year, we expanded our therapy program by having all of our clinical staff trained specifically in play therapy. We also expanded our food donation program to community clients and established ourselves as a facility sheltering animals and families together. This year, our efforts to continue our strategic plan quickly halted and shifted with COVID nineteen. While many businesses closed or shifted to online services, we have victims living at our shelter, so we were unable to take that route and were forced to find ways to improve our facility and practices that allowed us to continue serving victims while also trying to keep it safe for our clients and for our staff. For example, example, we usually have twenty-four bids available, but with the pandemic, we were no longer allowed to have individuals share rooms who were not family. So that limited us to seven rooms. We were able to keep our doors open for most of the pandemic, though we had to initially limit the number of clients to five people to abide by state restrictions, and we had to close temporarily for a few days when there was a suspected case. In those situations, we were able to offer hotel stays or referrals to other shelters. Additionally, because we knew it was difficult for clients to be able to house hunt during this time, we lifted our thirty-day restriction, provided many extensions and stay. In addition to our shelter services, we continue providing counseling, though we had to temporarily stop offering support groups for safety reasons. As you may remember, we have a clinical psychologist on staff. Though she has not been formally trained in school to provide telehealth, she and one of our master's level clinicians both completed an extensive nationally recognized program in telehealth and did exhaustive research on telehealth platforms. For our current clients who could not continue to engage in in-person services because of COVID, we're now able to offer transition. We've also continued offering advocacy and accompaniment, such as accompanying victims to hospitals, court, or other appointments. Unfortunately, there were times when appointments or our accompaniment was limited by the other facility due to COVID restrictions, in which case we would have to wait in the parking lots for those clients. The most significant change to our service was our education and outreach program. With the pandemic, all festival spares and events were canceled throughout our counties. So we did not have that opportunity to take our outreach materials or to present to groups on violence and prevention. Our outreach staff used this time to create materials individualized to different groups, such as our first responders and teachers, and to keep our presence on social media. Hopefully, things will return to normal and we can resume services later this year. I also wanted to go over our current fiscal year. Hotline calls were eighty-two. We've had six in the shelter from Buckingham County. And that's, we have not had an up-to-date data analysis since February third, so it's increased in numbers there. I'm sure y'all got our letter on a budget amendment. It has increased, but I will just summarize. It's, we're requesting the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars. That's because our clients that we see or provide services to is twelve percent of our shelter and operation cost. Twenty percent of costs for both the advocate and therapist that we provide services for, with a total of seventy-eight thousand one hundred spent on Buckingham County residents, which does not include transportation and client supplies. Therefore, we request the funding to cover approximately twenty percent of the cost serving Buckingham County with an additional one thousand dollars for client needs, such as paying for medication or any other things they might need in the future. Y'all have any questions for me?
I I do. How many counties does the South Side Center for Violence Prevention serve? How many other counties? I I do. How many counties does the South Side Center for Violence Prevention serve? How many other counties? Our board? I want to say thank you to you and to Ms. Jones for being a part of the Habitat for Humanity for Buckingham County and making it successful. So we really appreciate what you guys do, and, you know, we're right on the verge of budget season, so all these requests will be taken into consideration when Ms. Carter starts developing that situation here in the next month or so.
It's seven now. It used to be twelve, but we had to drop some. It's seven now. It used to be twelve, but we had to drop some. Not being met. Not being met.
If you did the math and that there was seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars spent on on ten re- on ten clients last year from Buckingham County, is that right? If you did the math and that there was seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars spent on on ten re- on ten clients last year from Buckingham County, is that right?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Okay, we're gonna move right along to N, which are Department Agency Reports and Items of Consideration. Number one is the registrar. Notice that anyone who is interested in running for the special election for the Board of Supervisors in District One for Dilwin Mayor or Town Council or another office on the ballot this November can stop by or call the registrar's office to get a candidate packet.
Yes, sir. That's just including costs such as advocacy and counseling services that they would have gotten, that we're providing for free. Yes, sir. That's just including costs such as advocacy and counseling services that they would have gotten, that we're providing for free.
Okay. Okay. Where do we kind of fall in in consideration to other counties numbers-wise? Are we are? Where do we kind of fall in in consideration to other counties numbers-wise? Are we are?
I would like to say y'all are probably top three. If you want, if you give me a contact number, I can send you the other data reports we ran in comparison to the other counties, if you're okay with that. I would like to say y'all are probably top three. If you want, if you give me a contact number, I can send you the other data reports we ran in comparison to the other counties, if you're okay with that.
Discussion on that, fellows. Right, number two, developments, I mean, Department of Emergency Management by Cody Davis, Director. I mean, that's not necessary, but I was just kind of curious if you had that in the top of your head there, maybe what those numbers might be. I mean, that's not necessary, but I was just kind of curious if you had that in the top of your head there, maybe what those numbers might be. Mr. Davis?
Good evening, gentlemen. How are y'all? So this line item is is gonna be kind of a two-parter that a few of us are gonna talk to you about, the boss, Mr. Chief Gene Stewart, and then also on the phone, we've got David Martin with the Health Department. So I'll get it kicked off. The first thing would be a partnership between the Virginia Department of Health and the county to establish a vaccination clinic in the county.
Any other questions, fellas? Any other questions, fellas?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask briefly, if, did you say where this advocate is in the county once a week? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask briefly, if, did you say where this advocate is in the county once a week?
Um, we have a community case manager who has been in Buckingham. I believe it's with the victim witness. She has been out for the past several weeks due to health issues, but typically, our numbers have increased from Buckingham when she is working with the community. Her name is Tanya Edmonds. So her presence in Buckingham's kind of helped our numbers go up. Um, we have a community case manager who has been in Buckingham. I believe it's with the victim witness. She has been out for the past several weeks due to health issues, but typically, our numbers have increased from Buckingham when she is working with the community. Her name is Tanya Edmonds. So her presence in Buckingham's kind of helped our numbers go up.
Hopefully for one or two uses, one and two deployments. We're looking at hopefully doing this on the eighteenth of this month, Thursday, the eighteenth. The biggest thing, reason we went for that date is because our law enforcement partners have to provide a lot of security for it, and on Friday, the nineteenth, which is the original proposed date, a lot of those guys are in court. However, there might be some issues with the vaccination side being available on the eighteenth, so it's kind of up in the air between the eighteenth and the nineteenth right now, but that's what we're going for. But to make a long story short, that vaccination clinic, we did some site visits. The whole team of us went to the barn and then also to the new community center. And the new community center just blew the team away with how perfect for this use it would be. And I guess a big thing to mention to you guys, aside from granting us permission to utilize that facility for that day, would be you should know that we would probably need to use it again in four weeks' time to administer more COVID nineteen vaccinations, but then also the biggest thing is that the county fronts all of the costs associated with it, but all of the costs are one hundred percent reimbursable from FEMA, and their expedited reimbursements, they don't take the year to two years like most FEMA reimbursements do. Gene can probably attest to some of that quick turnaround, but it's really quick, thankfully. Let's see, the the goal with the eighteenth day event would be to knock down the long waiting list of Buckingham County residents only that the Health Department holds currently.
Okay, but thank you for that. So she's so she's based at the at the courthouse. Okay, but thank you for that. So she's so she's based at the at the courthouse.
As far as I recall, yes, sir. As far as I recall, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Is there any type of restriction as far as the number of nights that someone overnight stays, that someone can stay at this facility? Is there any type of restriction as far as the number of nights that someone overnight stays, that someone can stay at this facility?
Typically, it is an emergency shelter. So it's thirty days is typical, but with COVID nineteen going on, as long as they're striving to reach their goals, they're working toward it, they're not breaking any rules, and there's not a safety issue that they're causing, we do allow extensions on a case-by-case basis. Typically, it is an emergency shelter. So it's thirty days is typical, but with COVID nineteen going on, as long as they're striving to reach their goals, they're working toward it, they're not breaking any rules, and there's not a safety issue that they're causing, we do allow extensions on a case-by-case basis.
Other questions? Other questions? Take this under consideration. Thank you so much. Take this under consideration. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for your time and have a good evening. Yes, sir. Thank y'all for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you for what y'all do. Thank you for what y'all do.
Number two under M, which would be Piedmont Habitat for Humanity, Sam Raven, Director of Resource Development and Marketing. Number two under M, which would be Piedmont Habitat for Humanity, Sam Raven, Director of Resource Development and Marketing.
Good evening. Good evening.
... health, safety, and longevity of their home. Typically, these are someone who, who might not be able to afford market rate repairs, but they still have work that needs to be done and they need something affordable. So when somebody applies with us with our repair program, we're looking at three things, so very similar to our homeownership. We look at need, what is the need you have for improved housing? With repairs, we're looking at helping with minor roof repairs, porch steps, wheelchair ramps, replacement of exterior doors and windows to help with energy efficiency, adding gutters, things of that nature. When we look at willingness to partner, again, one of the hallmarks of Habitat is volunteers working and then families working alongside those volunteers. We always love to say that we don't build for someone, we build with them. With the, with the homeownership side, that can be a family giving two hundred to four hundred hours of sweat equity volunteer hours. Obviously, with the repairs, it's nothing near that much. So what we ask for is just for the family to be involved with our volunteers in, in some sort of fashion. Often, it's a senior, and so there might not be the same ability to get out and help do the repair, even though we do have some that have done just that. But it could be getting a neighbor or another family member to work alongside the volunteers, or something as simple as providing refreshments. We've had some really neat times where a homeowner got together and did a cookout for the volunteers that were there. We don't ask them to do that, but that really shows why we do the things the way we do that. We want people to see that people in their community care about them and are willing to come alongside each other. Maybe they won't ever rub shoulders in any other circumstances, but on that day, they're together showing their love for their neighbors. So we like being able to do that. The final thing we look at is the ability to pay. So we, just like paying an affordable mortgage on our homeownership, our repair program, they are repaying a loan, an affordable loan. So we're looking at that they have the means to be able to do that. With this program, we are able to help those that fall between twenty percent and eighty percent of the area median income. So for example, and that's in, in, in the packets, an example towards the end of, of the PDF there, if you are a one-person household, the, the lower end we'd be able to serve at would be someone bringing in about seven hundred and twenty dollars a month in income. So that might be a typical social security check or certain wages that a family's bringing in. But we're really able to help people of, of, of many different income levels with this. So we go in, our construction manager does a scope of work, what are the things they need to have done? We look at the cost of that, it's a maximum of two thousand dollars. These are designed to be, to be minor repairs. We look at the family's income at that point. So however much the repair is going to cost for us to do, based on their income, some of that might be taken right off the top as a subsidy. So the ones that are towards the lower end of our income bracket are going to get a higher subsidy. And what we've seen, just as an example, we'll often have someone get about three to four hundred dollars immediately taken off the top of that repair because of the subsidy, and that does help keep it affordable. And then after that, they repay the loan, it's an unsecured loan, they're not signing away their house or anything, they repay it over twenty-four months with no interest. So we're doing everything we can to help families and to keep it affordable so that they're able to get these, these needed repairs done. Here locally, we're asking for five thousand dollars for us to start this program here in Buckingham. I will say that is, that is, would go alongside other resources we have. We have secured two grants specifically for Buckingham that have, we already have access now to five thousand dollars to help start the repair program, so this would go right alongside that. The other wonderful thing about the repair program, just like our homeownership, is it helps sustain itself. So as people make repayments on their repairs, it goes right back into the fund to help other families be able to do repairs as also, so it gets recycled right back into that. We, we have a great partnership here in Buckingham and all of our counties, because we serve quite a few, we have a local county committee made up of volunteers, and they're the ones that are boots on the ground in the county, working with the staff to make sure the work is done and right there, here in their own, in their own backyard. Very pleased to have here tonight Donna McRae Jones, who's standing. She is the chair of our Buckingham Habitat County Committee and been that for many years now, and she is also the, the president of our Piedmont Habitat Board of Directors. So Buckingham is well represented when it comes to, to the local habitat, and that's why we've been able to get so much done here in the county because of those partnerships. So that's in a nutshell, that's what we're asking for. There's a great need for repairs to be done all across our region. We get calls every day, people that need repairs done around their house. We see the majority of people that reach out to us are seniors who are aging in place in their home. And here in Buckingham County, a little over twenty percent of the residents are seniors, so we know there's a need there. Also in Buckingham, these are very similar numbers all across our region, twenty-five percent of the homes are fifty years or older. And so right there alone, you already see a need for some repairs might need to be done if people have not been able to take care of their homes. And here, just like everywhere else, there's people, you know, who are, who are working with limited incomes and trying to make it stretch as far as possible. So anything we can do to help make things more affordable for them and helping their house, their house last for many years to come, we're excited to be able to do. So again, I thank you for this consideration, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Our board, I want to say thank you to you and to Ms. Jones for part of the Habitat for Humanity for Buckingham County and making it successful. So we really appreciate what you guys do and, you know, we're right on the verge of budget season, so all these requests will be taken into consideration when Ms. Carter starts developing that situation here in the next month or so.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move right along to the end, which are department, agency reports and items of consideration. Number one is the registrar. Notice that anyone who is interested in running for the special election for the Board of Supervisors in District One for Deewone Mayor or Town Council or another office on the ballot this November can stop by or call the registrar's office to get a candidate packet. Question on that, fellas? Right, number two, developments, I mean Department of Emergency Management by Cody Davis, Director. Mr. Davis?
Good evening, gentlemen, how are y'all? So this line item is, is going to be kind of a two-parter that a few of us are going to talk to you about, the boss, Mr. Chief Gene Stewart, and then also on the phone, we've got David Martin with the Health Department. So I'll get it kicked off. The first thing would be a, a partnership between the Virginia Department of Health and the county to establish a vaccination clinic in the county. Hopefully for one or two uses, one and two deployments. We're looking at hopefully doing this on the eighteenth of this month, Thursday, the eighteenth. The biggest thing, reason we went for that date is because our law enforcement partners have to provide a lot of security for it, and on Friday, the nineteenth, which is the original proposed date, a lot of those guys are in court. However, there might be some issues with the vaccination side being available on the eighteenth, so it's kind of up in the air between the eighteenth and the nineteenth right now, but that's what we're going for. But to make a long story short, that vaccination clinic, we did some site visits, the whole team of us went to the barn and then also to the new community center. And the new community center just blew the team away with how perfect for this use it would be. And I guess a, a big thing to mention to you guys, aside from granting us permission to utilize that facility for that day, would be, you should know that we would probably need to use it again in four weeks' time to administer more COVID-19 vaccinations, but then also the biggest thing is that the county fronts all of the costs associated with it, but all of the costs are one hundred percent reimbursable from FEMA, and they're expedited reimbursements, they don't take the year to two years like most FEMA reimbursements do. Gene can probably attest to some of that quick turnaround, but it's really quick, thankfully. Let's see, the, the goal with the eighteenth day event would be to knock down the long waiting list of Buckingham County residents only that the Health Department holds currently, and to prioritize the last bit of our continuity of government folks and public safety folks and then the elderly. And then if by then, the second part to what we're talking to y'all about this evening hasn't been stood up, like I said, in about a month's time, we would do it again. And honestly, we'd probably keep trying to do that once a month until this other thing gets stood up. But before I go to the, the next part of this, do you guys have any questions or Ms. Carter or David, do you guys want to chime in on that at all?
I got a question. Would it be advantageous to have another site available for vaccinations or not?
A site?
I've had somebody in my district, which is Concord Baptist Church, come forward and ask me to put forth the invitation to use their focus center as a site if you needed it.
Right, and, and Sharon Baptist Church has reached out with the same. So, you know, I think in terms of logistics for these things, it's really intensive on the Health Department. Surprisingly, this, this thing that I'm talking about right now with this partnership with the Health Department only is also pretty challenging on, on the county. Those guys and, and I have to bring a lot, and Ms. Carter have to bring a lot to the table, but I think we can do it for one or two events. The thing that Mr. Stewart will bring to the table here is not near as logistically challenging on, on everybody except for law enforcement, they still get their.
I might add too that the Health Department has a challenging issue too with staff.
Yes.
Qualified staff to work the clinics.
Their, their, our waitlist is so long and so short to get through because they lost their nurse next door. So the same nurse is servicing Buckingham and Cumberland, so we definitely have a need for this. I think it is a, a great show of, of, of the resource that that community center brings to our county, you know, right off the bat, it's coming to the county's aid like that. Like I said, Mr. Martin's on, I kind of hear him making some noises up. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Martin?
Ah, yes, so, so this, this effort is parallel to the, the VDM-sponsored CBC Initiative. So CBC's pool primarily from larger areas, we are trying to do a more focused response to Buckingham residents only. Approximately right now, we have somewhere between eight, eight hundred and nine hundred Buckingham residents or folks who registered through Buckingham at our site or through our, through our local Health Department. Luckily, most folks have been able to find alternative methods to gain access to the vaccine, so we're hoping to take with at least one event, we should reduce our backlog. And two definitely would, would clear the backlog and put us towards a positive side and get that down. The Johnson and Johnson vaccine is starting to become available, and our director, Dr. Adicoia, has, has made the promise to use our available Johnson and Johnson vaccine, which is a one-dose vaccine, in our mass events. So we would be able to come one time and, and get the, get the initial, get those folks and get them fully vaccinated with one dose instead of vice the two-shot Moderna or Pfizer series. So we, we are positive in, in that regard. This, the, this effort allows us, like I said, to circle back, it allows us to use the state resources but to focus them on Buckingham residents, whereas the CBC will, it widens, it opens widely to, you know, anyone that can register through the, the COVID, the Virginia COVID Information Center. So we, we are trying to at best to bring it back to, back to Buckingham and handle that issue and get those folks off, off the, the waiting list. We will, you know, we was, if the CBC was to stand up there, have much better, much, much more access to resources than we do, once that became operational, we'd have to step aside and, and do more focused events, smaller ad hoc events like, like the gentleman was speaking of, you know, then we would have the, the ability to do the, you know, the larger churches and things in, in a smaller venue. Right now, with our resources stretched just thin as we are, we can get volunteers from other places. Last Friday, we did, we did an event at Prince Edward Farmville. Prince Edward and Farmville, about fourteen hundred names on the list, on the waiting list, we were able to shoot, administer about five hundred and twenty doses of vaccine. We had to go completely through the list to get five hundred to fill, to fill the five hundred appointment slot. So I think that with, what we're trying to do in Buckingham, we, our goal is to shoot for five hundred. I think we may try to push a little bit more to see how many, how many folks we can get off that waiting list. That's, that's our goal, that's our initiative, and that's the item we present for consideration by the board.
So before we move on to the VDM effort, Ms. Carter and I would like for you guys to let us know what your thoughts are on, on that specific event. And Ms. Carter, so I guess we need to ask their permission to utilize the space, but then also to utilize the funding to front the cost?
Yes, yes, and we do still have some CARES money that we can front the cost with until we get reimbursed.
It will be reimbursed from FEMA, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. First thing, I think this is an excellent opportunity for everyone in Buckingham County. The vaccine is going to be what gets us out of this pandemic, so thank the staff very much. And so I just want to be clear in that this, this is not a quote-unquote open event where people would just show up, but this is for people who have pre-registered with the Virginia Department of Health, vaccinate VA, and if people who are watching are interested in the vaccine through this effort, they are in 1B, need to call the Health Department, get on the list because they can't just show up, right Cody?
Right.
Okay, thank you, just want to clarify that.
Are we going to use the Johnson vaccine? Is that what I understood on here, the one-shot vaccine?
David.
Is that right?
That's what they're trying, that's what they're shooting for.
Okay.
If not, we'll have to use one of the other two options. A lot of what we do, especially with what he's going to talk about, is dependent upon vaccine availability, you know, how, whether we can go half throttle or full throttle, because that building, the capacity of it's big, you know, so, but we're going to try to go for the Johnson and Johnson if available because it's the one, one dose, so we don't have to waste time. I'm using air quotes when I say that, of getting the same person in there twice.
I do have a question, are you going to use the, the bus loop to bring traffic through there where people can be dropped off to, to get the vaccine, or have you designed what your, what your plans are to get people into, into the building, or how are we going to do that?
Won't use the front of the bus loop.
I, I think we were aiming to get people through the community center entrance and around back those sliding doors because of its ADA compliance.
Okay. And you're just going to use the multipurpose room for, for the vaccination process or?
No, to put it blunt, we would need to use everything except for the library, the multipurpose room and all the classrooms.
Okay.
Because if the vaccine's available, especially for his event.
Yeah.
And we, and we get the staff in there and can commandeer and, and just full throttle it, you know, we can.
Or is that going to be determined on how many people you have sign up for the vaccine? Or is that?
Uh, yeah.
Or how many vaccines you get.
Right, yeah, both down the road, especially when we're in Phase One Z and Phase Two and the general public are allowed to come out.
When would people be notified, Cody?
Well, the Health Department.
Oh, it's still going to come out through the Health Department, through some type of robo-call?
They still. They'll handle all of those logistics, thankfully.
Yeah, so, so the, the, for the event that we're, we're proposing, you know, we, we had the ability to tailor the call list, and the call center will use a robo-call system to notify the patients of their appointment time and the venue, the address, and it will also provide them a, a phone number if they have any questions that will route them back to the call center for follow-up. Now, a similar process will work for the CBC Initiative being done on, on a much larger scale if, if and when that comes online. But the, the event we're talking about on the eighteenth and the nineteenth, we will, we will tailor the list, the call center list, and have the call center engage that, and it'll happen probably, it'll probably happen the weekend prior to the, the event being later in the week, either Thursday or Friday, so it'll probably happen sometime the weekend before. They had the best success rate making contact in the evening times on the weekends, so that, that will be when we'll tell them to engage and start the call process.
And, and if I could add, I just want to make it clear that, that with this agreement with the Health Department, that it, there will be county staff that's involved and also some volunteers. For example, for the vaccination team, the Health Department would provide seven PHNs, volunteers and students, and the county would have three ALS. But I think Cody's working out with them what we have available to use for that. The registration team, they would want eight people from Buckingham and two from the Health Department, so it's, we will have county folks and volunteers involved in this. Cody feels like he won't have a problem getting the volunteers and we'll sure, sure all help as much as we can to get that done. But I did want you to know it will require some staff, and I think any overtime that the law enforcement or, or, our squad members would work would also be reimbursed. Mr. Wright has reviewed the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Health Department, and he may have some, and, and we just saw this like the end of last week, so we haven't, this has happened very quickly, or we would love to be able to provide you more clear information.
Haven't spent a great deal of time digging into the, but I don't see any real major objections. There are a few minor things that I probably would, you know, a lawyer looks at it, he's got to find something to change, so there are a few minor changes I probably would like to make, so it, it's certainly a good project and worthy of support if you think you can allocate the space and have time to have that done. I would have, I'd like you to make it provisional, subject to a final review by maybe the administrator and the emergency services coordinator as to the memorandum of understanding. Comment.
You want two separate motions for that, Ms. Carter?
I think that would only be one motion, but, because then we'll talk about the long-term. Then, okay. Oh, the funding, uh, well, I, I will bring back to you all an amount to appropriate, but we've got money we can spend with the CARES money.
We're talking, okay, that's right, we're meeting next Monday?
Yes, but if you want to go ahead and appropriate a certain amount.
Next Wednesday. Work session. So you want to, you want a motion for the funding and one for?
We haven't talked about an amount, for the one-time clinic, it shouldn't be all that much, I don't think.
Well, but if, if his thing doesn't go through, it, it would probably end up being multiple, I mean, just for reference, Prince Edward, for this same topic, appropriated a hundred thousand dollars for it.
One day?
For, for their partnership with VDH, it could be one or multiple, depends on when their thing gets stood up.
Cody, could you introduce the gentleman behind you?
I'll just let him.
You, you keep pointing to him.
I'm Gene Stewart, I'm Chief Regional Coordinator for the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and Buckingham County is within Region Three, the state's divided up in seven regions, and Buckingham's one of twenty-two major jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need to put a dollar figure on this if we're going to, to give some approval for the reimbursement, I mean, for the upfront cost for the county tonight?
That one's going to be, yeah.
Okay, so we shouldn't, so.
But you, you can appropriate an, an amount of money, and you know that we're, we're going to watch that very closely, and also we will have to keep it all separate and invoiced because it's very important to keep good records and invoices for reimbursement. So you all could vote to appropriate, what amount do you think you need from the CARES money?
Cody, how much, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Davis, how much did you say that Prince Edward spent in their one time?
We don't know what he spent.
A simple suggestion, you have a budget meeting set on the tenth, certainly the, the next day or the day following is when this event's going to take place. If you want to start with an initial appropriation, say of ten thousand dollars, that should certainly cover the first operation, then you can always come back and add more to, to flush it out or flush it out or add what you need to it. But to make sure there's enough money now to cover it, maybe just fund for this event with the caveat, we know there's probably more coming.
And, and we'll have some better details for our work session on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, the CARES money is already in the budget, so you don't have to appropriate the dollars, you just have to.
Okay.
So are you, they're going to drive around, you going to give them a shot in the car?
Going in the building.
Going in the building. I mean, I see a lot of places doing the drive-through, that would be less places you'd have to clean up afterwards, I mean, less places you'd have to use.
After the shot, they're going to wait, wait until I like to do it.
You know, once you get a time to come in, I don't know.
One disadvantage about the drive-through is observation, because once you have a vaccine, you got, you have to be observed for fifteen minutes or thirty minutes based on health condition, so then that increases the people that you need in the parking lot to watch the people there.
Okay.
It's, it's a lot easier to be in one room and observe.
Would that be observing everyone or just certain ones that has issues?
That, that, yeah, like I helped Lynchburg on Saturday, they had a hundred chairs set up and it was one person observing. So I was there observing just in case somebody passes out, somebody's not feeling well, so you're observing only those people once they get to vaccination. They time themselves for fifteen minutes or thirty minutes, at the end of that time, they get up and walk out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the use of the community center for the use of the COVID-19 vaccination for the Health Department to vaccinate the citizens of Buckingham County.
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion.
And that's contingent upon the approval of the county administrator and the emergency management coordinator with the paperwork involved.
County attorney.
And the county attorney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we call for the vote for the use of the new community center for this purpose. That's unanimous.
Do we need to move to appropriate CARES Act funding a certain amount?
You don't need to.
But we don't need to do that, yeah.
This is separate and apart.
We're going to do that, but we'll know more about the funding on the seventeenth. I think Ms. Carter will have the numbers.
But I think if we're going to have to move quickly forward for the one-time clinic at least, there's some boards and things that we need to purchase, it's rather expensive, but we will be reimbursed. So there's very much stuff you have to purchase. What, what kind of amount do you think, Cody, for just the one-time clinic and on the seventeenth? We'll consider more detailed expenses.
Ms. Carter, I was going to appropriate not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
That won't buy the sun. Yeah, that won't buy the sun.
Right, and, and to help pay the overtime as well, that's going to be reimbursed, but you need the money upfront now.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say go ahead and go with a hundred thousand, because if we, on the seventeenth, if it looks like you're, we're going to move forward with the rest.
Okay.
Certainly won't spend it if we don't, or I'll be monitoring it also, so.
Okay, I'll amend my motion for a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Second it, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion for the funding of the money for the vaccination, of the one-time vaccination that's going to be on the eighteenth, and the necessary equipment that's needed to start that process, and we have a second by Mr. Miles. And we have the vote. That's unanimous to proceed to try to get the citizens of Buckingham County vaccinated for COVID-19. Thank you for, fellas, we appreciate everything.
Thank you.
That's the next. What, what Gene will address now is the possibility of having up to a six-month.
Yes, ma'am.
Six days.
Okay.
Uh, VDM, which is the, and I know we use a lot of acronyms, Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And the way to think of VDM is that we're kinda like the state agency, similar to FEMA is your federal agency for emergency management. So with VDM, we are partnering with VDH and your local governments to find what we consider a community vaccine center, CVC. And the idea is that we know the vaccines are coming down the pipe. Right now, we're in about a two-inch hose and we are hoping to get that five-inch hose where it's just gonna be flowing freely. Uh, and we're starting to see that very quickly with Johnson &amp; Johnson coming on board. So our unified command has reached out to us in the regions to work with VDH, local partners, and finding sites so that once that inventory is plentiful, that we can flip a switch, open a building and vaccine everybody. Um, so what we're doing, they have taken all the jurisdictions, 138 jurisdictions in the state of Virginia. And within that, they have put them in different tiers. So for example, our focus right now is tier one and tier two, uh, local, localities. And this is based on, um, health, age, ethnic background, everything that they're taking into consideration. Buckingham County right now is classified as in a tier two category. So what I've done is meet with Cody and different other representatives in the Piedmont Health District to find locations. And with that, we went out and we looked at the barn and we looked at the community center. And like Cody mentioned earlier, we were blown away with community center. We're looking at, we probably could run at least 3,000 people through there a day, uh, to be vaccinated. Now, that's not just Buckingham residents, that's for the state. So if somebody's wants to drive three hours, they can drive three hours as long as they register. Still, you have to still register for it, but once we get citizens of Buckingham taken care of first, then this would open up to get other people. And we're trying to put this in locations that people will come to it, uh, they will get vaccinated. We are, as of 5:00 this evening, we are probably been a day or so signing contracts with companies that will do a turnkey solution. So once we say, okay, we, we're gonna run this clinic in Buckingham, then the state signs a contract for company XYZ, they will bring in your vaccinators, your registers, your parking attendants, everything. The only thing they do not bring in is law enforcement and, um, cleaning contractors. So that would be something, once again, you could piggyback on a state contract, reimbursable, and you can handle that. Uh, your law enforcement, what other jurisdictions are doing, for example, up in central Virginia Health District at Lynchburg, each jurisdiction as part of that health district is providing law enforcement. So on Saturday, you may have someone from Liberty, you may have somebody from Lynchburg, Campbell, Beffert, Amherst, Appomattox. They're using their mutual aid agreement to bring in extra law enforcement so it doesn't tie up and wear out your own local law enforcement. So the idea with this is it, it may start up in a month, it may be two months. We're not opening these centers up until the vaccines are plentiful. We don't want to open up something like this and you don't have vaccines. So that's where your local health department will continue getting their supply. And once the center opens up, they continue getting their local supply. And then this is supplement to that supply coming in, so we're not stealing from local, uh, supply of, of vaccines. Uh, it may run six months, it may run three months. We don't know what the magic number is, the governor's office will determine. Once you reach 75% of residents of Virginia have been vaccinated, they may say, okay, we're gonna close these CVCs and we'll continue using pharmacies, doctor's offices and local health departments. But until you get to that magic number, we want to have these sites, larger sites, so we can run people and get shots in arms.
I think what you all would like to have is for the board of supervisors to decide if they want to, you want to use the site for that.
And like I said, the money is reimbursable, it was either Alexander Arlington, it's one of the As up in northern Virginia. Um, they, within two weeks, they had submitted their reimbursement and they received $2.1 million, uh, within just a couple of weeks' time. What they're doing now is that they will reimburse you 50% based on pretty much good faith. And then from there, you will submit the rest of your documentation to show the, your actual expenses and you'll get the other 50% very quickly, so very quick turnaround. It's not, like Ms. Carter said, it's not a year down the road. Any questions? And like I said, we, you know, we may run six days a week. If we looked at a place on Thursday, um, and they already have, every Monday's already contracted out, that's fine. So we'll do six days. We will, the team will come in and they'll take down the tables and chairs that are there, open up the vaccination center, when it's six days up, they take everything back and put it exactly back like it was. So. And if you need tables and chairs, which the sites there had, they're sufficient, so, but if you did, that's something else that, you know, we contract out. Like I say, we try and make it as turnkey as possible.
Is the magic number 75%?
No, sir, uh, it, that, that's just an example.
Okay.
I don't know what the magic number's gonna be.
Okay, I'm just curious, but first priority is Buckingham County citizens first and.
Right.
But, uh, I guess it's a, how, I mean, how are you gonna reach these other people? You know, to, to let them know that this is a site, I mean, is that part of, is that the state department of health doing this?
That's still through the registration, through the state.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And like, um, Dave Martin mentioned is that, you know, the purpose right now is to get your county residents and that's priority. And then we may run these supplemental to, to theirs, you know, if they're say, the local health department has enough vaccines to run three days a week, we'll run another three days.
Okay.
So what do we need to do, Ms. Carter? We need to do a motion to allow this to happen or what?
Well, what, what I would suggest, if you are, are interested in it, remember the building could be tied up for six months. Todd said he does not have any programs that will probably be going on in that time. Daniel says probably as far as a lot of the things that have to be done yet to the building, it probably wouldn't be open to the public by then. So I think the first thing I would like to see you all do, and probably Cody too, is decide if you want our site submitted to be used as a site. And then between now and the 17th, maybe Mr. Wright and Cody, we could come back and, Mr. Carter, come back to you all with, cause there's some membrandings, memorandums with that too, I think, and some requirements. But we would know more, right now, we want to know if you all want to submit the site.
I'm for it.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
I'm just curious, why, why would somebody want to ride three hours to do that, uh, up in Buckingham if they could get it?
It is amazing, we've had a family that left Lynchburg and went to Clark County, three and a half hours. Uh, this, this, this past week, we had people from Petersburg coming up to Harrisonburg. Uh, if they get called and the vaccine's available, people are driving to it.
Mr. Martin, are you still on?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Are, are we putting the word out to Buckingham County residents, especially those that do not have internet access, um, of how to get registered for the vaccine, do you know?
Yeah, so they, uh, the folks that don't have internet access, they can, they can call into the call center and, and be taken through the process. So an operator at the call center will be able to pick their information and walk through the, walk through the process.
Do you have that number?
Yes.
We could also use our red alert system.
Yeah, it's one, one eight seven seven V A X I N V A.
Say that again.
Okay.
Back, one eight seven seven VAX N V A.
VAX N V A, okay.
Please, please don't ask me to find a, a rotary dial phone to, uh, break that out, so.
Okay, we could also use our red alert system.
I think it's a great idea, Ms. Carter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got a question also. Uh, what are, what are y'all trying to plan to do, like, we have a lot of elderly, like you said, 20% of our county, what are the ones that are shut-ins or don't have vehicle, the way to travel to get to a vaccination clinic, I mean?
P S R, Piedmont Senior Resources has the ability to do a medical transport for you if you, if you sign up. All you gotta do is call Jordan Miles, he's the man.
Yeah, what I was gonna, I mean, if that's a great point, Mr. Chairman, what I was gonna offer is is that we've got a meeting, I think, we as in Piedmont Senior Resources are part of a weekly call with the health district director and their, and her staff. And, uh, Cody's on those calls as well and other counties are too, and other localities. And so we stand ready, and I've communicated this to Cody and to some other folks and, and to some other counties, that we stand ready, uh, to take those who are homebound, because we've got the, we as in P S R, we've got a, um, several vans, several buses. And we did it in Prince Edward, um, had to do it twice because they used the Johnson, I mean, the, um, uh, the vaccination, we had to go, uh, uh, one month later. So we'd be more than happy to help with that. And there are a lot of homebound older adults who can hardly operate a telephone, much less get online, so.
And also, uh, we have an instant management team that's working with us and I have them currently working on a, um, transportation plan to work, try to figure out how to go, where those are, we'll work with census data, we'll work with agencies, faith, faith groups. Uh, there's five, five mobile sites that FEMA has provided to us that we can move out into areas. And as well, I know Campbell County, for example, they're literally going door-to-door if they find these folks and vaccinate people. So, I mean, there's many different ways we can do is finding those people sometimes is what's difficult. But we will make sure that people get shots in arms.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Need a, a motion or anything, Ms. Carter, or just a?
Yes, I, I think it would take a mo, make, to make a motion that you are interested in building being used for that purpose and then we could come back with more details.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that, uh, we have the county attorney, the county administrator, the assistant county administrator and our emergency management person, uh, look into us using the community center.
Director.
Uh, director, sorry, Cody. Look into the community center as a central vaccination point, uh, to get the rest of the residents as well as other citizens in the state of Virginia vaccinated with Co, for COVID-19.
I second it. We have a motion by Mr. Bryan and a second by Mr. Davis, uh, for that purpose, so, uh, I think it's a great thing and looking forward to it. Do we have a vote for that? That's unanimous, seven zip. You know, I'm just gonna, I'm proud to say.
Thank you, Gene.
I'm proud to say that, uh, the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors has done their share to help other localities across the state of Virginia to, uh, get people vaccinated. So I'm real proud of you guys, thank you, seven zip, that's great. Mr. Davis, you got anything else you want to follow up with?
Item, no, sir, thank you.
Is there something else you want to talk about?
The next item.
Yeah.
All right, uh.
In three.
First, the management award, award of the PSAP grant in the amount of $3,000.
This PSAP grant, the PSAP is our dispatch center, um, so working with Brent and his staff, Sam Davis and Jamie Schumaker, just, uh, a chunk, this is geared towards training for our dispatchers and dispatch staff. Those guys have a big undertaking on the horizon to become EMD certified, emergency medical dispatch certified. And Brent and Jamie and Sam are really hard-charging that and, and, and getting ahead of that ball. And, uh, this small chunk of change will help them achieve those goals if you guys, uh, will appropriate it.
Okay, we just need, we need it appropriated, that's all.
Can we have a motion for that?
A move.
Thank you.
Can we have a vote for that, for the appropriation of those funds? All right, unanimous, outstanding, fellas, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, number four, uh, the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association requests for in-kind services to help support a grant application. Uh, Ms. Ligon is on the phone, I'm assuming, to answer any questions you guys may have. My understanding of this whole thing, and Ms. Carter can probably give you a little bit better background than I can, but, uh, and of course, uh, Mr. Miles is also a part of this, uh, whole scenario. And I think this is really a, an outstanding situation for not just the members of the Cattlemen's Association, but for also the residents of Buckingham County that, uh, like to eat meat and beef and different things, so, uh, anyway, Ms. Carter, you want to speak on this a little bit?
Yeah, this is a, a grant that the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association is, uh, applying for, uh, for a local beef hub at our, our barn building here, facility here in the county. And, uh, from time to time in the past, the county has appropriated small portions of money, toward that grant, because a grant always looks better if there's local involvement in it. And I, I think that the Cattlemen's Association realizes right now how money is for most all localities. So they've asked for, um, maybe a pledge of some in-kind service. We discussed several items that were listed here in the letters, such as cleaning services, lawn mowing services and dumpster services. And as you all know, we don't have a lot of custodial or maintenance and ground staff that could do that regularly. But you may, I think you may be able to provide the, uh, the service of a, a solid waste container being there as an in-kind service for this grant.
And that would be used during their functions only, correct?
No, no.
It'd be used all the time.
Okay.
I think that, yeah, they're gonna provide a, a freezer, refrigeration unit there plus an on-site generator. So, um, this is for any resident of Buckingham County, might even be, I'm sure, I'm sure Cumberland too, cause they're part of the, uh, some of those guys are part of the Cattlemen's Association. But you and I could take a cow up there and have it taken to a USDA, uh, certified, uh, slaughterhouse and have it, uh, slaughtered and vacuum packed and brought back to the, to the barn for you to pick it up on-site and take back to your house and you could have me over for a steak.
But the, the waste container would be there all the time for, but the, most of the time that they would have much would be when they have events.
With us limiting access to our dumpster facilities to county residents only, how is that, that's a private business, correct?
Maybe Mr. Chairman, Ms. Ligon could tell us more about the project?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Ms. Ligon, you on the phone?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. So this project is basically to, um, kind of alleviate some of the concerns of not getting our animals processed. Uh, it would be available to Buckingham residents, Cumberland residents. And really, uh, we've gotten some letters of support also from, um, residents in, down in Mecklenburg County and Fluvana and Albemarle. So there's a great interest in this, um, it'll increase a little bit of traffic in, in the county. Uh, but it would provide, uh, the backup generator for the facility, which is one of the, um, the restrictions, uh, that has come about, having that designated an emergency, uh, center for the community during disasters. Um, so I think it would, it would definitely benefit directly, um, Buckingham County, um, but also help to serve, um, a, a vast number of counties, um, in, in the central Virginia location that has, um, been considered a food desert by USDA and also has, uh, very little access to, to good processing dates, let alone FDA certified processing facilities. Um, so that's kind of the background and I am here to answer any questions, but we were just hoping to get a little support. We did get all of the, uh, items and quotes back and the project is, um, what we were actually asking for from the tobacco commission is right around 186,000 and from the USDA, uh, 100,000. what we were actually asking for from the Tobacco Commission is right around 186,000 and from the USDA, 199,000. So combined, it's gonna be a fairly larger grant project than I had imagined, but it's definitely going to to serve the community in a large area in Virginia.
Supervisor Bryan brought up a good point, businesses are required to have private dumpsters in the county. Jennifer, can you think of anything else that the county might be able to buy this in kind?
I mean, what about a letter of recommendation from the board? You know, it's, you know, it's obvious our staff is kind of thin, you know, to provide grass cutting or cleaning. I mean, how else can we help?
Well, definitely a letter of support for this project would be very beneficial. I guess I was hoping that with the availability of that as maybe being designated a disaster shelter for the community and that it would be behind a locked gate, so not just accessed by anyone at any point, that the dumpster service would be kind of added support that the Tobacco Commission and the USDA Rural Grant Committee would favorably on.
Mr. Davis, do we do have the barn as a backup emergency shelter with our plan, don't we? We've been looking at doing that.
Exactly, with almost with Jean was still here, I can't count on it unless they have generator backup. And like that generator backup thing is apparently big for her, I have to have it to be able to count on it at all. But that facility is perfect, like very versatile for a lot of different things, you know. Sent Jennifer a letter of how, of all the different things that, you know, we don't really necessarily have a space for currently that that could offer us. You know, and by the time we, if we were able to support that and bring that online and then couple it with the amount of resources the community center provides us, we, this county in terms of the concerns I am paid to be concerned about is just taken care of almost completely. It's amazing, you know, but without that generator, backup generator that she would get through this grant, I cannot count on it.
But maybe, you know, then what I hear you saying, Cody, is if we were to give a letter of recommendation, we could reference the fact that we could, the county could drastically use that as an emergency shelter with the backup generator.
Yes.
Which would add fuel for them to get that grant.
Right, and she's gotten one from me, but something from the important people in the room might be very helpful also.
I know that Tobacco Com- Tobacco Commission usually does what some kind of a match or some kind of a makes it more favorable?
Yes, and excuse me if I don't, if I could interject, that the Tobacco Commission has actually gone up on that, so they now require 50/50 match, which is one of the reasons that we will have to go to the USDA Rural Business Enterprise Grant as well, but so any addition to that, either in kind or monetary, definitely looked upon favorably.
Mr. Chairman, could I, from Ms., I have a question for Ms. Ligon, is the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association a nonprofit organization? Or is it registered as a nonprofit?
Yes, they are 501(c)(5), which is a nonprofit agricultural. And that is one of the only reasons that they can apply for a tobacco grant as well.
So with that, Supervisor Bryan and I guess Ms. Carter, how would the dumpster, if we did place a dumpster and dumped it with obviously county resources and county staff, I know that we discussed that businesses are required to have a dumpster, but this is a nonprofit.
I don't, don't do it for nonprofits. Looking into something here real quick, a possibility.
Use it for emergency shelter if a generator comes through, we would have to put a dumpster down if we use it for, right, I mean?
If we opened the shelter, then we would move them into position.
Not prior to that.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working with Ms. Ligon a little bit in my capacity with the Virginia Tobacco Commission and I think this is a, you know, I was, just excellent proposal and excellent idea that's regional, you know, for the south side and central Virginia and it's not just gonna be for Buckingham producers, but all across the region. And that she's, she's working on letters of support from Appomattox and Cumberland and Charlotte and some other counties as well. I talked to one processor in the county on Sat- Sunday and he's backed up between now and October.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the letter of recommendation is gonna be an issue, I think that's some of the other in-kind situations that are gonna be a question mark, so I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, I'm ready to give them a letter of recommendation, whatever they need to get this grant. And then, you know, we still have to follow the ordinances and the policies that we've set forth in the, in the past as far as nonprofits. And, you know, we won't, I'm all for this, number one, anytime we can help not just the farmers in Buckingham County, but the adjoining counties, I'm for it. So I'm for whatever we need to do to write a letter and I'll sign it. That's my vote, I'm just speaking for Don Matthews, but I don't know how the rest of you guys feel, so I'm for the recommendation letter.
I agree.
I agree.
Rather than open up a can of worms with the dumpsters, if you all may want to consider a small monetary.
We can look at it, yeah, for budget time?
Well, their application is.
They would need to know now for the letter, you probably wouldn't want it put in a budget as a recurring cost.
Right, as a one-time donation?
How about maybe $5,000, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Carter?
Jennifer, how would that look with your application, you think?
That would be wonderful, we appreciate any, any assistance that will show the Tobacco Commission and USDA grant that you all support us. So I greatly appreciate that, yeah.
Supervisor, Vice Chairman Miles is on the Tobacco Commission and I've worked with some projects with them and I know that's very important, the community.
I got one other question too, while Ms. Ligon's on the phone. I know Mr. Miles and Ms. Carter both work very closely with the CRC, which is another grant writing service. And it may not happen this year, but you might want to get your ducks in a row for next year as far as any type of grant that may be, could apply with them to what you may need in the future, so like a, you know, they've had Homeland Security Grants and stuff like that. So I, it may be something out there that you would need to talk to the director of the CRC and just a conversation anyway to get you, your name in the hat, is how about that, could you, think you could work that out, Ms. Ligon?
Yes, sir, definitely, I will definitely do that.
Okay.
And I think that this could be justified by the fact that this generator will make it qualified for a county shelter if needed.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion that we, the Board of Supervisors, write a letter of endorsement for this project and that we allocate one-time money of $5,000 as a as a good faith effort to show a match, again, just $5,000 one-time towards this project.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, can we go ahead and get a vote on this? That's a unanimous vote and I think this is really showing a great need for the agricultural community of Buckingham County and surrounding counties, so thank you, fellas, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Right, we're going on to number five, which is the Buckingham County Youth League, consider renewal of Jean Dixon Park lease between the county and the youth league. Carter, you want to take?
Yes, this, it is time to renew the lease with youth league, you all do it annually. This, Mr. Wright has worked with this and this is pretty much, it is the same contract it's had before. My knowledge, I haven't heard of any problems, of course, they have been shut down most of the year, but this is pretty much the same renewal.
We can change anything in time, we want to pause.
And this is, we've been doing it annually, you all can change it to every two years, you can do whatever you want, but right now it is annually. They're wanting to get in there and just start doing some cleaning and signups and.
I'll make a motion, do we go ahead and accept the renewal with the lease between the youth league and the county?
For one year, Mr. Allen?
I don't think it's a whole year, I think it's December when it runs, so it starts next month, so.
Yes, sir.
Be all this year, yes?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to renew the youth association's lease, have a vote for that? That's unanimous, I think that's a good thing, I think the children are ready to get out and play some sports and stuff and hopefully we can get through this, the remainder of this year and get some of that stuff done, get these kids out there playing some baseball and football and stuff. All right, number six, Anti-Litter Task Force, Vice Chairman Miles is gonna give us an update for the Anti-Litter Task Force. I think everybody received a little brochure in their packet tonight. And I'd like to thank Sheri, who is our chairman of that organization. She's done a tremendous job and of course, we've got four or five other people, Jordan's on that committee, I'm on that committee, Lynn Hill, Eddie Schlegel, who else is on there, Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, Tricia Harris, two or three other people, I'm drawing a blank right now, it's in the.
Kendra Honeman, Liz Jones, Kathleen Kenny, David Ogden, Patricia Harris and I guess there's gonna be a motion for Roger Idelman?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, so just a really quick update and I have to say, I'm sorry that the gentleman left in a hurried fashion who didn't, who was upset about litter along the roads because we do have, this board is doing something proactively and we do have an update. So we had another preliminary meeting on the 12th of February and an in-person meeting on the 25th of February, our fourth meeting with the, with the, with the task force. We had a training presentation by Roger Idelman, who's with Keep Virginia Beautiful and we're gonna recommend that he be a ex-officio member of the task force because he brought us lots of bags and he is doing a fantastic job as Chairman Matthews says, our Anti-Litter Task Force Chairman Sheri's doing. Anyway, we've got a tentative schedule right now, is what we're planning on doing, a spring event. You'll see that in the handout provided as well and in the packet, and later fall event, but working with Keep Virginia Beautiful, we would have a, we would start it this year, April 22nd through May 15th. And we would have a specified area volunteer pickup, we're working with VDOT on that by way of Mr. Hill with a, with a small celebration with some awards based on the amounts of waste picked up along the roadways on the 15th of, of May. So that, and you can see the update in your board packet, so unless anyone has any questions, that concludes the Anti-Litter Task Force. And again, Sheri Holbrook is doing a fantastic job, she deserves, she and, she and that task force deserve all the credit.
Do we make a motion to add Roger?
Yeah, that's number seven, we're gonna, number seven is Anti-Litter Task Force, we got a appointment, so Mr. Miles is gonna take care of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just as previously discussed, Roger Idelman with Keep Virginia Beautiful, he's been volunteering a lot of time with regards to his expertise, he's done this in lots of other counties in terms of helping anti-litter task forces and committees and that kind of thing get off the ground and he's been at every meeting and he was at both meetings in February too, so Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I'd make a motion that we appoint him as an ex-officio member, which means non-voting, but he would, because he's not necessarily a resident of the county, which he's not, that he serve with us there.
Got your motion?
Bug it.
Need a second, okay, we got a motion and a second by Mr. Allen for the appointment of Roger Idelman. Vote, please. Unanimous. Okay, now we're gonna move on to, with your county attorney matters. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay, we're going to section P, which is the county administrative report. First one is update regarding CVEC slash Firefly project. Carter, I'm gonna turn that over to you, but we've got some pretty exciting news.
I didn't have the report at the time that I did this agenda, I received it today. And so I think Jennifer provided you all for copy, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I gave you, some of you another copy. But this is an update on the fiber build in Buckingham. Do you all want me to read everyone down through there, the status of them? But I think an important thing that's, that's coming up is an upcoming Firefly Universal Service Regional Broadband Announcement. And the Thomas Jefferson Planning District will be reaching out to the county very soon to invite us to a virtual meeting that they're hosting on behalf, that will include nine other counties within central Virginia. This meeting will discuss details and partnerships between Firefly, Dominion Energy, that's the key, you all have been wanting Virginia, Dominion Energy in on this so that people with Dominion electrical service can get the internet broadband service. So as well as Rappahannock Electric Co-op. This is not yet public regional project that Firefly is embarking on. I will help ensure that every Buckingham citizen, regardless of their electric utility provider, will have access to world-class broadband internet. So they're telling us to stay tuned, you all may have seen where this is happening in Pluvana. And so I have been told that I may get a call tomorrow that has more updated information on this, so I certainly will keep you posted. But also the Buckingham VADA application, they've not heard any work on the VATI program on the award status for our application in Buckingham. A re-scoped VATI application had to be submitted to Department of Housing, Community Development to exclude any of the areas within our VATI application that received funding from Rural Digital Opportunity Fund Auction. So they have provided a, for our reference, a description of that. But that gives you all an update of where they are right now with the central Virginia electric connections. And little additional information that Buckingham County has approximately 8,200 homes and businesses. Almost 4,600 are served by Central Virginia Electric Cooperative and will have internet options from their system-wide fiber build, which will be completed by 2022. So that's important and it's a good update, we remember when this first started and now it's certainly becoming a reality. They said there are a few areas with CenturyLink DSL that exceeds 25 slash three and another local fiber-based internet company provides service to our school system and a small portion of residents and businesses. With these two providers plus Firefly, more than 80% of all county buildings will have access to broadband after this project. That's some good news.
Ms. Carter, on the, on the grant application? It says that they're laying fiber around the town of Dillon and down Scott's Bottom Road, they are doing that now.
They are doing that, okay.
Yes, ma'am, I talked to one of the contractors Saturday, they're laying 50 miles of cable.
Also on Bell Road.
And they have like, what is it, Jamie, 30 days?
That may be, is that Comcast?
That, that is?
That's Comcast.
That's Comcast.
But they're gonna be in the same area too?
There'll be some competition, crisis, that's all. There'll be some competition, prices, that's always a good thing. The only other matter I have is just to advise you that our VATI board, we did approve a dividend credit on our insurance policy, and Buckingham's credit will be two thousand seven hundred and four dollars. And that completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Carter, I appreciate that. We're going to move right along to informational items that are in your packet, the February building permit report, and also the CRC information, are there any discussion on those items? If there are none, we'll move on to the next one, other board matters. I think we've covered everything. Okay, S is executive closed session, which we will not be going into tonight. Then the last one is going to be, we're going to recess to reconvene at 5:00 PM for a budget workshop with the school board, and the total budget workshop beginning at 6:00 PM on March 17th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question, is the school board going to meet with us physically?
Yes, they are.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
And we're excited about that, so. We're going to recess to reconvene.